Okay, good evening, good afternoon. I'd like to call a special meeting of the board of selectmen together for -- to order for Monday, February 26, 2018. If you would please rise, join me in the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its power.
Okay, so, sorry, I back to you, but I'm going to be talking amongst those guys mostly. So I am going to present my budget recommendations to my two colleagues. And we are going to go through the capital budget, or first the operating budget and the capital budget. And we will vote on these things and then should be in position to present our final recommendations for the finance at tomorrow evening's meeting. So Rich and Paul, what do you have in front of you? There are two documents. The one says, the first one I want to cover says 2018-2019 budget for selectmen's recommendation summary. That's this, this page right there. And the pages that follow are simply the same sheets that we had in our main budget binder with some of the changes that I'm recommending. And you'll see as you go through it, page by page, that the things that I've recommended changes to, I've made notations on that. I made an extra column over to the right so you can see what those changes are. But just to give you a quick overview, there were quite a few changes that I did recommend. The department requests, unedited, came in on the town side, 4.35% increase. Dan, do it. Should I wait? Guess not. The aggregate change was 2.61%. And I did a couple of exercises. After I went through the changes that I'm recommending, there were quite a few things that I took out. You'll remember that, okay, you'll remember that the highway department, we were recommending that we start building up that highway construction budget. So we get it to the point where it doesn't need to go into short-term borrowing. So we had recommended moving it from $600,000, which is what it was last year, up to $800,000. So after I made all the changes, I backed that out to, just to see, you know, what that impact was, kind of take out some of the big things. So I added an extra column in there. It's the third one from the left, and it says FS adjusted budget. And you'll see that that is the, that's what the budget would look like if we kept, if we didn't put that $200,000 into move it from capital into the operating budget.
So from 2.92 down to 2.1?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
And that would make the aggregate budget 1.86% increase. But with keeping the $200,000 increase in there, you see that the aggregate is 2.14%. It's about consistent with inflation. Now, of course, we're not talking about revenue at this point. We still don't, we still don't have numbers. So this is, this is a work in progress until we know what those are. But this is, this is the budget that I'm going to recommend based on needs. You'll see on there in the summary, I did some, just a couple of, some of the major things. Road construction carries the $200,000 increase. We increased, I'm recommending the increase of part-time hours for the health department. Laura had requested a full-time sanitarian. We did not go all the way up to full-time, but we did put additional hours in there to try to, try to take some pressure, some of the workload of that, off that department. Senior center assistant, that goes to full-time as well as some increased hours for the van driver. But the overall number comes down because we found that those weren't, that there were ways to save on that from the original request. So it's an increase from the prior year, but it's a decrease from what the original request was. Legal and overtime. In both of those cases, there were several departments that had overtime numbers that had never really been budgeted accurately, never, you know, based on history, and same with legal. So we left those increases in. We, I'm not recommending that we add the part-time personnel for the building department, for the patrol officers. We may want to discuss that because there is a request for two. We may want to rethink that. Bob Kozlowski and I reduced the audit charges expected for next year and reduced consulting charges in several departments that have those. So this is the overview of the recommendations. And I would ask you, how do you want to proceed? You want to go department by department?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so starting at number 100, the selectmen's budget. Do you guys have any recommended changes?
You want to do a motion to approve?
Sure, we can.
Like, like we have in the past, we, you know, made a recommendation and either approved it or changed them or...
Okay. All right, you guys ready?
Yep.
Okay, sure. All right, I'll, go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve the selectmen's budget as submitted. You want the dollar amount stated?
Yeah.
I'll second that. That essentially, for discussion purposes, is what we discussed in the meetings.
Yeah. Yeah. If you, you'll see on there that unless there's a notation, there's no change. All right, so we have motion on the floor to approve number 100. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item number 110, treasurer. I'll make a motion that we approve in the amount of $6,000. There's no change.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that carries. Department 120, finance department. You'll see that there's a small change there. I'll make a motion that we approve in the amount of $442,814.
Second.
That's contractual salaries, isn't it?
No.
No, it was the auditing.
It was auditing. Any changes? All right, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that carries. Department 130, town clerk. Recommended no changes on this. I'll make a motion that we approve in the amount of $233,510.
Second. Right here, this was the, okay, all right, okay.
All right, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that carries. Department 140, assessor's office. No changes recommended here. These are all flat except for salaries.
Right.
Make a motion that we approve in the amount of $224,942.
Second.
Any, any discussion?
No.
All right, hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that carries. Department 150, tax collector. Again, no changes except a minor change in salaries. Everything else is flat. I'll make a motion that we approve in the amount of $205,018.
Second.
Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That carries. Department 160, professional services. I didn't change this, but this did carry a $25,000 increase in legal services for the reasons that we have discussed, that historically, legal runs anywhere from 150 to 190 on a yearly basis. So we did move it up and, you know, hopefully we can keep that low. So I'll make a motion that we approve in the amount of $216,080.
Second for discussion?
Okay.
In the past, where it just comes out of the general fund when they do the final audits?
Contingency?
Contingencies.
What winds up happening at the end of the year, prior to the completion of your audit, you go through all the different accounts and you zero them out, and overall, our expenditures are in a surplus position. So if there's a deficit here, assuming it's not a million-dollar deficit, we have enough in maybe another account or accumulation of other accounts that's going to come in.
All right.
We normally spend about, normally 200, right?
Yeah. It doesn't normally come out of capital non-recurring. It's just surpluses from other accounts or...
Zeroing out of the different accounts.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it's a good thing that we increase it because it's a real, more of a realistic number.
Do you think it's increased enough for this year? Probably.
Probably not, but it's...
The question is, we don't have any major legal battles on our hands, do we?
No.
No.
We just have negotiations for labor. Yes.
And that's, that's up a little bit, too. So that should be okay. Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that carries. Item 170, probate court. This is a small budget with a little bit of an increase in microfilming. I'll make a motion that we approve in the amount of $5,201.
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that carries. Item 180, building inspection. You'll notice that I recognize the department is really jamming this time of year, but I did not recommend that we approve, flesh it, the request for additional part-time headcount in that department. So I reduced that. The requested increase in the department was a little, was almost $28,000. I reduced it down to $7,684, which is the rest of the salaries in the department. So for discussion purposes, I'll make a motion that we approve Department 180 in the amount of $238,945.
Second.
Okay, any, any discussion?
Well, I guess, if push comes to shove during the year, if he's overwhelmed, we could probably bring in part-time. Right?
For example, if you come with a request for more finance, it is, there may be money in wage contingency to cover it, $10,000.
Okay. All right, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that carries. Department 190, data processing, or as it should be called, information technology. I'll make a motion that we fund this department in the amount of $301,903.
Second.
Any discussion?
I might have a question just a moment. For some reason, the contracted services went from 161 to 185.
Mm-hmm.
Is, is that for different licensing or something that we need?
It was a combination of all the licenses that we have for the town, but it also includes the software for the budgeting.
Yeah.
We're looking at, we are going forward with that, and that's included in a number along with all the other licensing increases.
Nick did the Windows 10 upgrade last year, the security upgrade, right? And that, that's a higher license, too.
Yes.
The Board of Education was also, their licenses gone up too for software. We're a victim of computerization on this.
Well, we're a victim...
We get the same rate as where that gets.
I know.
We get a commercial rate.
Well, a lot of those specialty software companies have bought each other out, so there's no competition inside of these areas, unfortunately. Okay, any further discussion?
No.
All right, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that carries. Department 200, social services. Just does not include the, the non-government subsidies, just the department. Almost flat, this is a $143 increase. So I'll make a motion that we fund this department, 200, in the amount of $88,883.
Second.
Okay, discussion?
I'll just say one thing.
Yes.
There is $20,000 in the budget for the non-government.
Yeah.
So that includes $143. It's the same.
Oh, yeah, but the detail appears on the other page. Right, that's what I meant, thank you. Okay, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Department 210, town insurance. I'd love to row at zeros at the bottom of this, no increase. I'll make a motion that we fund in the amount of $1,399,999.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
That carries. Department 220, fleet maintenance. I will make a motion that we fund in the amount of $333,050.
Second.
Okay, any discussion on this one?
This is the one where we were down to one mechanic and they added a little more to the overtime account.
Correct, yeah. The, as long as the, you know, my thinking on that, as long as the work can get done, a little bit of overtime is less expensive than a full-time person with benefits. So there are two departments that are affected by that. And the overtime is up a little bit, but the overall net change from a couple of years ago is, is less cost.
I have no questions about that at all.
Okay, okay, so $333,050, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that carries. Department 230, public works. We brought the consulting services down a few thousand bucks on that, and basically we're going to be, it's got a little bit open-ended, but we're going to be looking for some less expensive ways to get engineering consulting. So I'm going to make a motion that we fund this department in the amount of $322,478.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? If I'm going too fast, just let me know.
No, it's only a 2%, it was a 2.6% increase.
Yeah.
From looking at it, it's just...
From what it was five.
I have a question.
Sure.
Doug doesn't have his PE, correct?
No, that's correct.
If he had a PE, would, could the, be, well, we would pay him more, but would he be able to do some of these other services that are under contract services?
Yes, yes, he would. He'll be sitting for that, that exam sometime this summer, I think. He can't, we probably still farm some stuff, I mean, some specialty stuff, but yeah, he would be able to take over some of that, and he would, he would get a salary increase, too.
They also removed the intern line for $25,350.
Yeah.
Yeah, we took that out.
Oh, that's right. All right, any other discussion?
No.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that carries. Highway department, so we already talked about this a little bit. This carries, the biggest change here is the increase of $200,000 to, to move into the, move more maintenance and construction into operating and away from capital. So I'll make a motion that we fund this department in the amount of $2,171,113.
Second.
Okay.
I'd like to make an amendment to this account.
Okay.
I'd like to take $200,000 out of it and fund it at 600.
I'll, I'll second for discussion.
It's just, you know, I was looking over the previous budgets, and last year we did raise it, but they were forecasting for the, you know, several years ahead, you know, for $500,000, and we did raise it. I think with this year's budget, there's a lot of money being asked for, and I think we should just maintain the status quo for the $600,000.
Well, I'll, let me ask you a question. One of the things, when, when Bob and Brad and I went through this, one of the things we recommended is taking 200 out of, in our original capital presentation, there was $200,000 in there.
Well, I'm, I would not put it in capital. I'd totally eliminate it.
That's going to, that's going to cut, cut out two or three roads if you've got that plan. Okay?
That's my opinion.
All right.
I'm going to support the $800,000 because all along, you know, I can remember years ago, and this goes back five administrations, or six, five or six administrations ago, which I was sitting on this board, we cut it, and then we knew, we had to cap, go into capital budgets, okay, and fund this thing. And I, talking to Bob Dibble, I says, are you comfortable with $800,000? He says, yeah, I'd like a little bit more. I says, live with 800. I just don't want to be funding money, to go out and borrow money for that. I'd rather have it in the annual budget, so I'm going to stay with the 800.
Well, back to my discussion when they made their presentation. When they're rebuilding the roads, the roads are really, when they, he does a full reclaiming process of the roads, that's a capital improvement. That's not a maintenance item. So I don't support it.
Okay, all right. All right, so we have an amendment on the floor to reduce, that would be reduce line number 404 by 200,000 and fund it in the amount of 600. Any further discussion on the amendment?
On the amendment.
On the amendment. Okay, then I'll call for a vote. Those in favor of the amendment, please signify by saying aye. That would be you, Rich.
Oh, oh, for favor of the amendment, oh, yes, aye.
Those, those against?
Nay.
Nay, I'll have to vote against that. Thank you very much.
Okay.
So we're back to the main motion of funding in the amount of $2,171,113. Any further discussion?
Bob, or, what did we spend last year? I'm sorry, maybe it's here.
On what?
On road.
On the road rebuilding?
Let me see it.
Well, we had 600 here, but we also had department accounts in the capital. So we have around...
Yeah, okay. We'll stay.
All right, those in favor? Are, are you ready or?
Uh, let me just...
I don't need a motion, it's okay.
On, on this road building, rebuilding, if I can find it, I think he still has like $500,000 left in that account.
But a lot of times, the bills come in and body parts and space and roads, we send them back. So it could take four or five months before we rectify the payment process.
Okay.
That's the only reason why you'll see a lot of rooms.
Yeah, that's, wondering why there was so much left in that account.
Okay.
Okay.
Any, any further questions, comments?
No.
All right, so we're at 2.171,113. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those against?
Nay.
Item 240, or, Department 245, transfer station. There's an increase in part-time help on that to increase the hours and take care of some of the additional volume that's happening there. So I'll make a motion that we fund this department in the amount requested, which is $195,125.
Second. Second.
Bob, what's the, what's the revenue stream look like under the new pricing?
Well, right now, I think the bottom line, we're probably looking at somewhere around a big even, maybe a small deficit.
Okay.
Certainly better than it is last year. And there's more contracted services for tip charges because there's more debris coming in.
How many hours is a part-time person?
I think we just put 520 down.
It'd be, it'd be no more than 20. In fact, it'd probably be more like 10.
Yeah.
Because they, they just need people to fill in on lunch hours and sick days, basically.
Well, you know, that's, it's a heck of a lot cheaper using a part-time, because when we have, we don't have anybody there, we've got to bring somebody from highway, and then you have to pay the highway wage. And then on the weekends, you really have to, if you're using highway, you're really paying overtime.
Right.
So this is, this is fine.
Okay. All right, any other discussion?
No.
Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That carries. Department 250, planning and zoning. This is another area where we reduce consulting services a little bit. I'll make a motion that we fund the department in the amount of $236,304.
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
All right, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that carries. Department 260, building maintenance. We reduced maintenance and repairs by about 10,000, and there's a increase, increase is shown in the, the energy management system and then cleaning, cleaning contracts with the vendor that supplies those services because of the increase in square footage when the police station comes on, which will be right at the beginning of the fiscal year. So I'll make a motion that we fund this department in the amount of $722,212.
Second.
Questions, discussion? All right, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that carries. Department 270, tree warden. No change there, that's a zero, zero change. I'll make a motion that we fund in the amount of $85,400.
Second.
All right, discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that carries. Department 290, emergency management. I'll make a motion that we fund the amount of $28,176.
Second.
Okay, any, any changes, discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that carries. Fire marshal, I'll make a motion that we fund in the amount of $96,819.
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that carries.
Matt, I don't know if you want to make note, you did make one change.
Part-time, you kept it flat.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
It was supposed to go up $1,550. Just as an echo.
I, I did use the, the adjusted number, though, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that was a change of $1,550 bucks. All right, thank you. Okay, Department 310, Bethel Fire Department. Make a motion that we fund in the amount of $170,250. And I want to, I want to discuss that, you know, we certainly want to support the department, but I'm recommending extra, outside of the capital, that we fund, that we fund this in the same amount as the previous year. And this is based on history when Bob and Brad and I went through it. But would certainly welcome your input.
Well, some of those things were going to go over to capital, uh, capital non-recurring, yeah.
Capital non-recurring, yeah. Yeah, you'll see when we do capital, quite a bit of that stuff goes on, capital non-recurring. Yeah, so just so you know, on the things that we took out from the operating, so this is Bethel Fire, so we pushed over to capital non-recurring for next year, upgraded building security, gas meters, assorted hose, attack hose, supply hose, saw, rescue saw, and hose washer, and water main. So...
Water main's still in there.
Yeah, water main is still in there, so...
I know that's a problem, though.
Right.
Matt, do you have to pick a specific line item? I don't think you can just go, adjustment to the fire account. It's not like a boiler bed or a livery. I think you might have to...
Well, individual line items.
Take it from a particular line item.
All right, well, in that case, hold on.
Equipment and supplies is the biggest.
What was requested remains, I'm sorry, yeah, remains the same.
Well, but there's, some of those things are in firehouse maintenance. I don't think it was in vehicle maintenance. All right, hold on a second.
It's a. Professional services that you reduced it, all right?
All right, hold on a second, let me do some.
It's all in professional services, that's the difference.
All right. So, I'll make a motion then. Let me start over on that. I'll make a motion that we fund line two oh two, equipment and supplies, in the amount of seventy-two thousand nine hundred and five. Wait, wait, let me, let me double check that, make sure I got that right. Yeah, line two oh two, this is within three ten. Make a motion that we fund line two oh two in the amount of seventy-two thousand nine oh five. And that we fund, I'll, I'll break it into two motions. What I'm gonna do is take some out of two oh eight, understanding that we might have to readjust these later to make the, make this balance out, make sure that that's correct, but because there's more in the capital side, the capital non-recurring than, than just this, the fourteen, nineteen thousand. So, I'm recommending that we fund line two oh two in the amount of seventy-two thousand nine oh five, line two oh eight in the amount of forty-four thousand one fifty, and no changes to the other lines, and that, that will add up to one seventy-two fifty.
Yeah, forty dollars. Forty-four one seventy?
Oh, I'm sorry, one, one seventy, yep, you're right. Yeah.
So, what's the grand total here?
The grand total is still one seventy.
Still one seventy.
Are you still maintaining for professional services fourteen thousand?
Yes.
Yeah. He, he's moved a lot of that over to capital non-recurring.
Okay.
All right, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that carries. Oh, Rich did, okay. Okay, so. Next is Stoney Hill Fire Department. We're gonna have to go through the same exercise. Three, Department three twenty. So, let's take a minute to take a look at that. Okay. So, I'm gonna make a motion that we fund line two oh two in the amount of forty-six thousand five hundred. And Brad, let me know and make sure this thing works. Line two oh seven in the amount eleven thousand five hundred. Line two oh eight in the amount of forty-one thousand. Line three oh one, dues and education, in the amount of fifteen thousand five hundred. Line three oh six, professional services, in the amount of fourteen thousand two hundred and fifty. And line four oh three, capital equipment, zero. That currently shows fourteen thousand six hundred, which I've made a note that we moved to capital, capital, capital non-recurring. That is the breathing, the bottles, SCBA bottles. And that should add up to one seventy-eight, or, excuse me, one twenty-eight seven fifty, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so that's, that's the motion. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I have a question. You're talking about moving that to capital?
Yeah. Non-recurring.
Yeah, but you have it in the, yes, it is in the right line. Okay, thank you.
All right.
Yep.
Those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, that carries. Department three three zero, registrar voters. This is a slight decrease from prior year. Make a motion that we fund the department in the amount of ninety-six thousand three hundred fifty.
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Department three four zero. Make a motion, this is boards and commissions, this is flat. Make a motion that we fund the amount of fifty-six thousand seven fifty.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
No.
All right, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that carries. Health Department, number three fifty. Make a, there's a slight reduction in this, but some additional hours for, to fill in part-time help for sanitarian inspectors. Make a motion that we fund this department in the amount of three hundred fourteen thousand nine hundred thirty-two.
Second for discussion.
Okay.
Okay, so we're, we're just only adding like two thousand dollars to the sanitarian?
Yeah.
I, I'd like to make an amendment to that. I'd like to go up, to make it a total of five thousand more.
Okay, five thousand more?
Well, the, five thousand more than the forty, the previous forty-six.
Forty-eight.
No, the, the current is forty-six.
Yeah, current year is forty-six, she was requesting forty-eight. So, you wanna, so you wanna take that forty-eight thousand and move that up to, add five to it, right? So, fifty-three? Four-ten?
Add, add five thousand to the current forty-six because you've already added two, two something to that.
All right.
You know, originally, she was looking for twenty-two thousand more there, so, I mean, five might help versus two.
Yeah, okay. All right, so, so that would bring line one, one oh four to fifty-one thousand five seventy-nine, right? Okay, so that's, your amendment is to modify, to increase line one oh four to fifty-one thousand five seventy-nine?
Yes.
Okay. Any, any further discussion on the amendment? Any, any further discussion on the amendment?
Yeah, let me just discuss this, is it necessary? Do we really need to add that five? Because I'm gonna ask, from a overtime point of view or anything, is it history?
In this account, she's never hired, in the last ten years, she hasn't had a full-time sanitary in here.
And we're still with part-time.
Yeah, but she also stated the other night when she was here, she's doing a lot of the work herself.
Yeah, yeah, she's working six days a week, a lot of hours. She's just filling in, so I, I would like to give her some relief.
Okay.
She has, she has the contracted services going up though.
Yeah.
At the same time. Ninety-seven to seventy-seven?
Okay. I'm gonna support the, the amendment. Okay, you guys ready? All right, so on the amendment to add five thousand dollars more to line one oh four, to, for a total of fifty-one thousand five seventy-nine. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay.
Three-one-eight-one-zero-one will be the new bottom line.
Three-one-eight-one-zero-one?
Yes.
Okay. Are, are there any other changes in this department? Okay, so I'll call for, or I'll make a motion that we fund three fifty health department in the amount of three hundred and eighteen thousand one hundred and one dollars. Do you have a second?
Second.
All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All right, um, three sixty, police department. I'll make a motion that we fund the police department in the amount of four million five hundred and twenty-five thousand four hundred and twenty-four dollars. And you'll, you'll note the. You'll note the changes on there. I, I did not, and I would like your discussion on this, because I'm just one of three. Did not add the new headcount, reduced the overtime somewhat, but increased it from the prior year, and reduced vehicles from four vehicles to three.
Are we in the discussion phase here?
Yeah.
I think it's good, because I know I'd like to do, add, add all of this, but right now, with the state and both on the town side and education side, and you look at the bottom line, it's millage. I think we ought to have to live within our means, so I think that's a good move on your part there, Matt.
Yeah. Also, also during the discussion of building new police station, it was never any talk about adding headcount.
That's right.
You know, so.
That's right.
You know, I mean, situations might have changed since then, but I agree with Paul and, and Matt on it, that, you know, we, we have to hold a line somewhere this year. The requests are up from everybody.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That carries? Department three eight zero, parks and recreation. Make a motion that we fund this department in the amount of one million two hundred and ninety-three thousand seven hundred and fifty-nine. Do you have a second?
Second.
And keep in mind that the, the revenue that this department generates is in the neighborhood of five hundred and seventy thousand or so, right?
Yeah.
So, this is a department that is facing a lot of pressure from the public, there's a lot of services, the, the demands on the department is growing, the demands on the facilities are growing. So certainly, they deserve whatever help we can give them, I think. So, any discussion of that?
Second, please.
Yeah, go ahead.
No. Okay.
All right, those in favor?
Aye.
That carries? Employee benefits, slight reduction in this department. Basically, the, the LoSAP program that was set aside years ago for the two fire departments is, is pretty much fully funded at this point, there's no need to make a contribution, it is a healthy fund. So this is, I'll make a motion that we fund this department in the amount of five million eight hundred and ninety-eight thousand two hundred and thirty-five.
Second.
And that represents a reduction of seventy-eight thousand seven fifty-eight altogether. Any other discussion? Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That carries? All right, that's, four hundred is just the detail of requests that go through social services, we don't need to vote on that, that's, we'll take recommendations based on the total from the department. So I'll skip over to Department four oh five, different government agency subsidies. This is where we have Connecticut Conference of Municipalities, Hart Bus System, Council of Small Towns, the Sweetheart, the parades, veterans assistance, and so on. So I'm gonna make a motion that we fund this department in the amount of four hundred and forty-three thousand four hundred and twenty-five.
Second.
That's about two point two percent reduction. Do you second?
I second it.
Any, any discussion?
Just a question. Now that the senior citizens got their bus, should, should Sweetheart be reduced?
I don't think so, because Sweetheart handles more than the, the senior citizen population.
I know, but they, they used to pick up part of it. I mean, I re-contract, are we obligated under a contract to a, with the, with the bus company?
Not, not really. With the Sweetheart system, they, they base it on the level of service that you want, so we, we could talk to them about reducing service. I was going to, my recommendation, when we're thinking about this, is to leave this for this year and see what the utilization is now that we have our own, our own means of transportation. Because I, I don't really have enough data from Hart Bus Company to be able to project what that savings might be.
I, I wouldn't touch it.
Brad, do you have any other current numbers? Any date or anything like that?
We have one bus.
The Sweetheart.
Well, the amount's down here because of the volume that they're doing for us.
Yeah.
It went from ninety-one down to eighty-two.
Yeah.
That's why you got the reduction in the account, basically.
Okay.
But I think like Matt said, it's too early with our bus to determine whether or not it's gonna have an effect on that going forward.
All right, that was just my only question.
No, it's a good question, thank you. Okay, any further questions?
No.
Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That carries? Department four-ten utilities. Up slightly, although, well, we don't. We haven't gotten a number from Eversource yet on what the new streetlights are gonna be. That should go down, but we, we don't have a. You guys didn't get a projection?
Not on that.
So I'll make a motion that we fund this department in the amount of two million five hundred and fifty-two thousand nine hundred and sixty-nine.
Second for discussion. Was there any projection when they came and, and proposed changing the streetlights?
No, they just said they're gonna be cheaper. I mean, it, it could be, it could, I, I would think that changing all those things to LED should save.
Yeah.
A pretty substantial amount, I mean.
But right, right now, we're between a rock and a hard place, I guess we don't know.
Yeah.
On that, and, you know, if we could just look into the fuel oil situation, you know, we, we need to make a decision what we're doing with the fuel oils that's in the existing tanks.
Well, did you say that there, did we get a number on the solar farm yet?
Thirty-four thousand two eighty-five.
Oh, we do, okay.
And savings?
Year one.
Wow, all right. And that's not a full year yet, is it?
Well, that's for first year.
That's the.
Well, we could capture that into line three twenty-one, if you would like.
Yeah.
Why not?
Thirty-four two eighty-five.
Are you, are you calculating that, Brad?
Yeah, so that, with that reduction in utilities, line four three twenty-one, two million two hundred and thirty-five thousand three hundred and thirty-six dollars.
Okay.
And the bottom line then is?
Two million five hundred and eighteen thousand six hundred and eighty-four.
Okay. All right, then I'll make, I'll make the, I'll make, I'll adjust that motion, I'll withdraw the motion and, and restate it. That we, in Department four-ten, we, we fund line two oh four in the amount of one hundred and forty-one thousand eight oh three. Line two oh five, fuel oil, in the amount of forty-one thousand five forty-six. Line three twenty-one, utilities, two million two hundred and thirty-five thousand three thirty-six.
I'm sorry. I thought it was two, two million two hundred and twenty-four. What is it?
What'd you say what it was, Brad?
Utilities is two million two three five three three six.
Right.
Thank you.
Then, streetlights, three, line three twenty-two, one hundred thousand, for a grand total of two million five eighteen six eighty-four.
Second.
Okay, sound good? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Line four twenty, miscellaneous charges and transfers, this is where, this looks like a big change, but this is where some of the negotiating contingencies are stored. So I'll make a motion that we fund this department, four twenty, in the amount of five hundred and five thousand twenty-nine dollars.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That carries? Okay, four thirty, senior center. I'm going to make a motion that we fund this department in the amount of two hundred and thirty-two thousand five hundred and fifteen. Do you have a second?
Second for discussion.
Okay, and then you'll see that there's not quite ten thousand taken out of the assistant directors, that's, that's where the. It, it's an, it's an increase over the prior year, that it, it does move up the assistant director by, what is it?
Ten hours.
Ten hours, ten hours a week, and it does add some hours for the second van driver. And there's a couple of important things to keep in mind here, for insurance purposes, as well as some other legal purposes. The trip program that has been run for many years by the friends of the seniors has to be taken over by the staff. So there's, there's an increase in workload. The fundraising will still go through the same mechanism as it did before, but it, it has to, there has to be a little bit more of a legal separation between friends as a five-oh-one, C-three, and, and the staff. So, the, there's a little bit of an increase in hours there, but there's also an increase in revenue, because the revenue from that goes through too, so it's kinda like the park and rec system. Those changes are revenue neutral.
Okay.
So, any other questions?
So, yeah, just on the driver, how much did you add to the driver? The, we had funded that at twenty thousand last year.
It went to thirty-two, so twelve thousand.
That's for the, both of them, right?
That's assuming we don't receive any grants. Last year we got a small grant.
These are both part-time, correct?
Part-time, yeah. And we need to keep that bus on the road for the hours a week, otherwise the state, the state will take it back. I mean, there, there are a lot of us who get, get the broken dome.
And we have grant applications again this year too, so, not out of the question. Any other questions?
No.
Rich?
No.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor to fund it, two hundred and thirty-two thousand five one five, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That carries? Department four thirty-five, library. I'll make a motion that we fund in the amount of eight hundred and eighty-six thousand four hundred and twenty.
Second for discussion.
Okay. And of course, now this one, we just do the bottom line, and we don't, we don't. We can recommend stuff, but we don't. We don't get to pick.
I, I make a motion, I, I'd like to amend the motion to take out of the bottom line. Eight thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars. Just to lower it a little bit. Just, it's one, one percent.
Make a ten.
I was just taking a one percent.
Make a ten.
So what's your motion?
Well, my motion is eight thousand eight hundred and sixty-four dollars.
Sixty-four?
Yeah, sixty-four would be one percent of it.
Okay. All right, so that's, that's a motion for an amendment to remove eight thousand eight hundred and sixty-four from the bottom line total, correct?
Yes.
Okay, any further discussion?
No, no, it's mute.
What's that?
It's mute, my difference.
Those in favor for the, of the amendment?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll, I'll, I'll support that. So the new total, Brad, you can do this faster than I can.
Eight hundred and seventy-seven thousand five hundred and fifty-six.
Okay, so I'll, I'll make a motion that we fund the department in the amount of eight seven seven five five six. Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item, Department four four zero, debt service. Make a motion that we fund this department in the amount of three million nine hundred and thirty-nine thousand two hundred and thirty-eight.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
No, yes.
We can talk about it, but can't do anything about it. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That carries? Board of Education, Department four five zero. Make a motion that we fund this department in the amount of forty-five million one hundred and sixty-six thousand two hundred and eighty-two.
Second.
Any discussion?
I think the Board of Education did a commendable job in formulating a budget, given the circumstances that we were given from the state and also here locally. I can't fight that at all, I think it's, I think they did their homework well.
Any other comments?
Yeah. They're sitting behind you, but I'd, I'd make a motion to reduce fifty thousand dollars from their bottom line. Just, it, it's, in a forty-five million dollar budget, I, I don't think fifty thousand dollars is a, a big hit to them. I mean, you know, we have to say something to some of the people, so, I mean, just.
Well, I'll second it for, so it's on the floor.
You put me between a rock and a hard place on this one. Go ahead.
All right, so, so we'll vote on the amendment to remove fifty thousand?
Yeah.
Those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, I'll, I'll support it. So the new total. Is.
Forty-five million one hundred and sixteen thousand two hundred and eighty-two dollars.
All right, so I'll, I'll make that motion for forty-five million one hundred, which thing was one sixteen, right?
One sixteen, yeah.
One sixteen, two eighty-two. All right, do you have a second?
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That carries? And finally, we have Department four six zero, building maintenance, for the Board of Education, I'll make a motion that we fund in the amount of five hundred thousand eight dollars.
Second.
Those gonna take off the eight dollars?
Really?
Any, any discussion? Okay. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Aye? Okay, so Brad, what's the, what's the grand total?
Uh, the grand total is seventy-four million, four hundred and thirty-four thousand, five twenty-four. I'll read it again.
Say that again.
Seventy-four million, four hundred and thirty-four thousand, five hundred and twenty-four dollars.
Don't we have to do the, don't we have to do the town and...
Yeah, actually, I think we have to do the, well, we've already voted on Board of Ed budget, and, yeah, we have to do, we have to do town operating budget and the total.
So the town side?
Yeah.
Is twenty-nine million, three hundred and eighteen thousand...
No, it can't be twenty-nine.
You gotta do it with the debt service?
To do it with the debt service. 'Cause there's two line items on the budget. It's the Board of Ed and the town.
Okay.
All right, so what is it? It's...
Twenty-nine million, three hundred and eighteen thousand, two hundred and forty-two.
Okay.
Twenty-nine, three eighteen, two forty-two.
Okay, so that is town, um, 460 in debt, correct?
Correct.
Okay. 'Cause those are the three that are on the ballot.
Yeah, they're combined on the ballot.
Okay. Town, all right, so I'll, I'll make that motion that, that, uh, the town budget be funded, which includes 460 in debt, in the amount of twenty-nine million, three hundred and eighteen thousand, two hundred and forty-two. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
All right, any further discussion?
No.
Hearing done, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Could, could I ask, Brad, what, what is the, uh, town operating budget without the debt?
Yeah, just... Now, without the debt?
Right.
Is twenty-four million, eight hundred and seventy-eight thousand, nine ninety-six. So twenty-four, eight, seven, eight, nine, nine, six.
Thank you.
Okay. All right.
The total increase year over year, the total budget is two point oh one two percent.
So far?
Two point zero one two.
Two point zero one two. Increase.
Sure, it came down from there.
Yeah.
Okay, well that, uh, do you guys want to take a five minute break, drink some coffee?
Yes, please. I never drank the other one.
Or you want to just leave it? Let me take another one.
Dr. Carver, I didn't know she would have been here.
Hey, Terry.
She was actually up in Parxian testing.
Yeah.
We don't...
Well, it's at a hundred two percent.
Should we take a hundred thousand?
Yeah.
Take it, reduce it to seven hundred thousand.
Are, are we off? Deon, we off?
Can we go back? We still, yeah.
Okay, we're rolling. Okay, so recess is over.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion, Matt, to reopen again the town side of the budget. And I just, I'm sort of the bottom line guy. I'd like to see the budget below 2% increase. And what I'd like to do is go to Highway Account, Department 240, and under Road Construction, reduce that down to $700,000.
240?
Yeah, that's account number 404. What does that bring us down to in terms?
Well, wait a minute. Okay, so we're doing another amendment. You're putting a motion on the floor to amend line 404 by how much?
100,000.
Minus 100.
Right.
So that brings it to 700,000. Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All right. Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to amend line 404 within Department 240 by reducing it by 100,000 to a total of 700,000. Is there discussion on the motion? Hearing done. Those in favor?
Aye.
I'll vote nay, but I'm outvoted. So thank you very much. So then we will need to adjust the total, which will be, Brad, correct me if I'm wrong, it should be 2,071,113, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so I'll make that motion that we adjust the total of the Highway Department, Department 240, to a total of 2,071,113 dollars. Okay, got that? All right, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That carries.
We go back into the back.
So now we've got to go back, go do the backside again.
Right.
All right, well, let's just start at the top, go top to bottom. So the new town operating budget should be?
29,218,242.
Seven.
Well, I'm not doing the ballot one yet. So the town by itself, Brad, correct me if I'm wrong, this should be 24,778,996, correct?
24,778,996.
Okay, so that's my motion, 24,778,996. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That carries.
This is, that doesn't include the?
No, we're going to do that one separately because we call that the, I call that the ballot number because it includes the other two items. So that, so the new total town number, including 460 and debt load, should be 29,218,242, correct, Brad?
Yeah.
Okay.
And the increase? Percent increase is what?
1.991.
All right, so on the new total town number of 29,218,242, is there a second on that?
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that carries. And then the grand total should be 74,420, I'm sorry.
No, three.
Three.
334, right?
Yep.
74,334,524, right?
Correct.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All right, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, that carries. Okay. All right, thank you. Now we're going to go look at the capital. If you want to pull that apart, it's probably easier to look at. What's that?
Overall, 74,879.
Eight, seven, nine.
Eight, seven, five.
Eight, seven, five.
Okay, give it to me again, I'm slow here. Hang on, let me get to the last page. Okay, where is it? One?
So the town as a whole would be 1.875. That includes border, border maintenance, debt, and town.
Okay.
That came down one. Two. Dollar thousand, maybe one six.
All right, so capital, I've conveniently color-coded the columns on this thing. The blue column is what I'm recommending for this year's capital budget. And so I'll kind of go backwards on it. You'll see the total is 3,31,500. So you guys want to start at the top?
Yeah.
All right, so Assessor's Office, there's nothing to add in there. We do not need to set aside money as we have in previous years. Plan of concert, going down to planning and zoning, plan of conservation development is already handled, so there's nothing there. In the IT department, we have moved the installation of the CAT 6 fiber optic from capital over to capital non-recurring for the current year. Basically, what we've done is taken up, swept up a few of the things that could be included in the current fiscal year with the capital non-recurring, so we can make those recommendations to the Board of Finance at a later date. So that 50,000, we don't even need to vote on that now. This is what I've recommended for inclusion in capital non-recurring. So for Assessor's Office, planning and zoning, IT and fleet, there's nothing in this budget in the capital recommendation. If you move down to the Highway Department, you know what, there's a stray number in there. I thought we had removed the 200,000 for road construction.
No, because they put it in operating budget.
Oh, I forgot to mention, the paint column is just generally moving things into later years. I probably should have put those in different order. So the question is, do you want to leave any money in capital on the road construction?
No.
No, okay, take it off. All right. Brad, did I send you this sheet?
No, but I made my sheet out to your sheet.
Okay, all right.
The only question I didn't see on your sheet, Matt, is we used to have 220 for the highway building maintenance, highway garage roof. Did you intend to move that out to out years?
No.
No.
You know what, I think that's in building, isn't that in building maintenance?
It's in building maintenance, yeah.
It's a tough one. But there's nothing in.
You know what, I did not do that intentionally.
I saw that you pumped that in first.
Yeah. I mean, that literally must have been a keystroke error because when I was moving the columns, because I intended for that to stay there. And what is that, 2?
220 even.
220.
On building maintenance?
Well, you want to go down department by department or?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Okay. All right, well then, I'm going to skip over the thing that I put on road construction because I?
Let's scratch.
We'll scratch that.
All right.
Yeah, because I took out the wrong 200.
So that takes it down to about 617 so far?
Yeah. So Bob, did we go item by item or just department?
Item by item.
Item by, yeah, yeah.
All right, so I'll make a motion that for the capital budget, we include 86,500 to replace medium-duty truck, replaces the 1999 Ford F-550 flatbed.
Second for discussion.
Okay.
Is there any? Could we buy or lease them to buy or something like that? Does that work out, Bob? I think, didn't we just lease the truck for park and rec?
Yeah.
But that's a small truck.
Yeah.
And that's necessarily a truck that's going to be plowing once it's on. We could, you know, lease the buy, but we're just going to spread the cost out over the next four years. That's all it's going to go down to. Plus, you're going to pay the financing cost time.
And you'd have to move it to operating.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Any other discussion?
No.
You ready to vote?
Yep.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, that carries. Next item, I'll make a motion to include a Class 8 42,000 gross vehicle weight truck, replacing a Ford L8,000 1995 model in the amount of 196,000.
Second.
Discussion.
Okay, yes.
What are we going to do with your used truck? Because if this is a plow truck?
Yeah, but it's an old truck and it's the same model as yellow ones. They could save it for parts because they having trouble finding parts. Because you're not going to get that much for the truck, probably.
We got something quite a bit for those old Macs. Well, it's?
Well, it's, yeah.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Carries. Item number three, environmental compliance vehicle wash. This is something that D. is making us do, in the amount of 105,000.
Why? I know, I know it's a compliance issue, but?
Do the surrounding towns have it?
No. No.
Not right around here. Some towns in the state have put this in, but?
There's a debate, especially with me, where it should go. I know they want it at the garage, and I keep on saying the ideal place would be on Paul Street. You can just dump it right in. You don't need?
To haul it, yeah.
Yeah, you don't need to haul it or anything. So for this year, I'd strike it.
Okay. All right, well, I'll withdraw the motion then.
Okay.
Oh, wait a minute. You want to, like, vote formally to defer it or just not take action on it?
Defer it.
Defer.
Defer it.
Okay. Yeah, so I have a motion on the floor. So those in favor, just vote no.
No.
Nay. Okay. So we'll keep this on the list and defer it for future study because you're right, the Paul Street solution could be a more effective one. Okay, last item in Highway, Elgin Street Sweeper to replace a 2002 before it falls apart in the amount of 230,000.
Second for discussion.
All right.
Go ahead.
All right, if we buy the new one, can we cut out renting to? To, yeah, cut out renting the other one to get the streets done quicker. It'd just take longer to do it, but you've got your own vehicle doing it, you know?
Timbale said to us, he still has to use it.
Yeah.
The outside servant. And the question is, the old street sweeper, we asked him at the hearings, he said, what are you going, I asked him, what are you going to do with it? He said, well, we'll keep it, try to keep it going and get more hours out of it. Now, the street sweeper's, for the most part, are a mechanic's nightmare dream.
Yeah, it's all.
Depends on the table you're on.
Depends on if you're billing by the hour.
Right.
Yeah, we did talk to him about that, and he did say that he needs to have two street. I mean, it's possible that he could use the old one for a while.
A while, yeah, and cut down on the other.
Right.
So our bottom line for Highway is going to be one, I'm sorry.
You got a new number, plus I got a comment.
Elgin Street Sweeper.
Are you going to vote on the sweeper?
Yeah.
All right, those in favor of the sweeper?
Yes.
Aye.
Aye. All right, I'd like to, you, Matt, you had deferred something there.
Yeah.
The?
The vehicle wash?
No, you had deferred the Cotfischel culvert to future years.
Well, yeah, probably next year.
Can that road hold up until next year? It was in bad shape.
Is it? Well, if you want to?
I mean, and I want to make it perfect clear, it's not on my side of the road. It's totally on the other side of Cotfischel Road, so I'm not saying, you know, I want my road fixed.
Okay, no.
But in my opinion and the opinion of the neighbors over there, it needs to be done.
Okay. Why don't you make the motion?
I'd make the motion that we add the repair of Cotfischel road culvert replacement to the capital plant.
So put that 150 back?
150,000.
Okay, I'll second. All right, any other discussion? Hearing done, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, moving down to Board of Ed.
Can we have a bottom line on that?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
The bottom line for Highway would be 662,500.
Did you take out the?
Yeah, he took out, he took out the 200 and he took out the 105.
Yeah.
Give me that number again.
662,500. So you took out the 200,000 for road construction, 105 for the vehicle wash, but added that back in the Cotfischel culvert.
Which is what, 150?
150.
Okay, got it.
Okay, I don't think we need to vote on the department separately.
No, because it's not the capital.
No, right, yeah.
Right. Okay, so going down to Board of Ed, make a motion that we include the turf field and track resurfacing for 964,000.
A second for discussion. I can't support it, Matt, I really can't, you know. I know there's coming down the bottom of the line here, there's heat and air conditioning equipment that needs to be repaired at the high school. I just can't support it at this present time.
Same here, you know, given the circumstances with the state, I know that track needs to be resurfaced. Maybe we can even, hopefully, hopefully we could have put it off for another year. But I can't justify it either. Given the fact that we're going into construction of two new schools, or renovation of two schools, it's just too much to ask of the electorate.
Okay, just to be sure, you guys did see that after discussions with the, with the school administration, that the other stuff got moved over, like high school boilers?
Yeah.
All right, okay, got you.
But there's still 350,000 in HVAC repairs and recommissioning going on.
Do you, middle school auditoriums?
All right.
No, they took it out.
I got you. Okay, so, I'm sorry, further comments?
Hey, you, okay, keep going.
All right, well, we have a motion on the floor to approve 964. Those in favor?
Nay.
Nay.
All right, well, I'll vote aye, you guys vote nay, so. All right, thank you. So then the next one is high school HVAC repairs, 350. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion?
We need it.
Yeah.
All right, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that carries.
Bethlehem Middle School stage lights?
Yeah, Terry, did you hear? We had a question about that, middle school stage lighting. Was that already done?
Just the house lighting, not the theatrical.
That's what it was, the house lighting. Okay, so I'll make a motion that we include Bethel Middle School Auditorium stage lighting replacement for 50,000.
Second for discussion.
Okay.
Is it not operating or they just want to upgrade it or?
They've been struggling with it for years.
Wasn't that part of Angler School?
No, I don't think.
No, the Angler School did the house, the, you know, the, not the stage lighting.
Can be replaced.
There were problems.
Further discussion? Still thinking?
Yeah.
I could lend a little bit, the issue is not updating, it's something newer, the fact that what we have right now is old, it can't be replaced, and potential with the curtains up there, fire hazard.
Oh, really? Okay. So this is, in other words, a total new light bar and panel?
Yeah, I'll get back to you on that.
No, it's got to be just lighting, it's not.
It's just, it's just the light.
It's got to be just lighting for 50,000 dollars, no?
I try to get bargain occasionally. Yeah, okay.
All right.
All right.
Are you ready to vote?
Yeah.
All right, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and let's make a comment that it's a safety hazard.
Okay.
Please.
All right.
So the bottom line here?
We got?
All right, then turning the page to building maintenance. So that first item that I missed, that I zeroed out, Highway Garage Roof, 220,000. That we needed to keep in, I think.
Yes.
Yes, okay, so I'll make that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All right, any further discussion? Hearing done, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That carries. Structural repairs to the sand shed, 65,000, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
You know, I thought we made some repairs last year to that.
We didn't, it got, it got pushed off.
Okay.
It got deferred. Okay, so, get ready to vote?
Yeah.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that carries. Dog pound, get us out of hot water with the state, that's another 65,000. I'll make a motion that we fund the dog pound improvements. And what this is, is building a new garage, like Sallyport, on the other end of the building, the part of the building, the part of the property that's not sinking into the wetlands, and refurbishing the roof inside it. But it's a, we've been written up by the state several times on this, it's a problem.
Do you have a second for that? Second.
Okay. All right, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so building maintenance total is then?
The 350, I'm sorry, I said as listed, 350.
350. Okay, moving to Bethel Fire. So let's talk about both fire departments together. We have a request for three new trucks, two aerials and one engine.
Okay.
I had suggested with, you know, with a nod to the guys over there, that we put together an ad hoc commission to go over the details of the aerials and see what the needs really are. I had recommended that we go ahead and fund the engine for the pumper, because that's the one that's off the road a lot, right? So that would be my motion, is that we fund 660,000 to replace Engine 6.
Second for discussion.
Okay.
Who got the last truck? Was it Bethel or Stony Hill?
Bethel.
Bethel did. Just, you have two pumpers there?
Yes.
And Stony Hill has one or two?
They have two.
They have two also?
Is there, what did you say, you have what?
We have two.
And they have two. Is the old pumper worth anything?
Not a lot.
Not a lot. 60,000? No.
I mean, we can clean it up and put it out there.
Can you live without one for another year?
This one's already cost us almost 20,000 in unforeseen repairs this year. Actually, I had to pump rebuild. It failed at fire school on us. We had guys in the building because the pump failed, so.
So you had to rebuild the pump?
I had to, yeah, I had to pull it out and put another engine in and then.
It's not that we, I don't want to do it, it's the fact that I'm just taking a look at this whole bottom line here. I'm struggling.
Yeah.
I'm really struggling with the bottom line here because I know the feeling out in the community. And, you know, with? you know, with the state, it's, it's always a big question, and we're not a Greenwich, unfortunately, you know, you know, that's the thing.
We're just trying to replace a twenty-year-old.
I know.
Yeah.
I understand that, I understand that, you know, and if, I'd like to really say, let's, for both departments, let's put it all off till next year, I, I just don't see it. I know, I, I know, I know you're shaking your head there, but.
How much is our insurance, I mean, is, you're, that's our, your, where are your insurance policy?
Yeah.
That's.
I understand that.
What year is that truck?
It's a ninety-six.
Ninety-six?
Ninety-six, ninety-seven.
Ninety-six, ninety-seven.
Um, I'll support the motion, because if, if we put it off, we're putting the other trucks off, and, and we, we can't buy three trucks at one time, so.
Yeah.
You know, we buy this, a truck this year, and maybe we skip next year, and then, you know, whatever ladder truck is needed in, in the following year, I mean.
Let me ask you guys again, here, help me here on this. If you put an order in, we don't have to pay for it till it's delivered, correct?
Correct.
And when would that be delivered?
Depending upon what we get, build time is nine months to a year.
Would, Scott, would we get a discount if we paid for it upfront?
Uh, a lot of places do offer a discount if it's paid for in full upfront.
How much do you think that discount would be?
The last one was the Sutfin, I really can't remember what the discount was.
Forty, fifty grand?
I, I don't know if it's gonna be that much, I can, I, that's something I can look into with the manufacturers and see where we're gonna get our best deal from. You know, as long as it fits the needs of the town, and the way the town's growing right now.
Yeah.
Can, can you get that information to Bob, and then you go forward to the board of finance, you know, they, they could reduce the amount? If they wanted to?
I, I, I know you're limited because of size there, and, 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 I'm, uh, let me just ask, have you shopped around different, I know you have, you, I know on your ladder truck, it's a Sutfin, but, have you shopped around with different manufacturers like Pierce or whomever's around?
Um, we were sitting down last night with eight different manufacturers, all their specs in front of us, looking to see what would be the best for us, so we, we have, we know what we're looking to get, we know, you know, we know what our, you know, where we're confined to, so, we're looking at what they're offering in size, and can we get on there what we need?
What's it, you know, like bar and all that, right?
Because, I mean, we carry, each truck, we carry a thousand gallons of water, because we're still a lot of rural out.
Right.
That in town, so we need to be able to keep a lot of water in a truck, which adds to the height of the truck, but we still need to keep it under like nine foot nine to get it in the building.
So you, you haven't committed to any, anybody, so you're, you're open to, I, I know in the past, you, you wanted to keep the same brand trucks and everything, but I think, are you in the, um, open to any truck that will make, meet your specifications and fit in the building?
Yeah.
So, you know, if we can get something.
We're not limited to one, one manufacturer though.
That's what, that's just us.
Before, I was led to believe that was the case, but.
It's nice to have standardization, but understanding with the state cuts on, on your end and on our end, you know, we need to work together, so we're, we're looking at all kinds of different things that, you know, as long as they're gonna work and are reasonable for us and for taxpayers.
So, we wouldn't have to. If it's a cash upfront, there's a massive discount, then it pays.
I think we had a discount on Pierce.
Yeah, I think Pierce did, but, you know, downtown, the engine five, there, there was a discount, I just can't remember what it was. You know, six sixty would be a high number.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I'm sure we can find something obviously less.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
Well, should, Bob, is it prudent to give them a lesser number, the, or shoot for the, what they're asking for?
I think you're right, I mean, you really don't know where that number's gonna go to, so.
It's not true, yeah.
We wouldn't borrow, if, if it wound up being six hundred thousand, we wouldn't borrow, six sixty just would've saved a bargain, six sixty.
Yeah.
And in most cases, we'd probably pay for it ahead of time and then borrow afterwards, you know, so, just to replace the money in general.
After that, other than the aerial, I mean, where, where do you see your department looking for other vehicles?
But, that's in the, uh, report.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's.
Apparently look.
It's not, it's.
I mean, the next closest one would be the, the rescue, and that would be until like twenty twenty-four.
Oh, all right. I don't think I'll be here.
Sure you will.
All right.
All right.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor to fund, uh, to include it at six sixty. Any, any further comments?
No.
All right, hearing, hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? All right, that carries. So that's it for that department, um, Bethel, Stony Hill, uh, the two aerials were, um, deferred, uh, for further study, and we'll, we'll, we'll certainly take a close look at those. Um, all right, let me go back to Bethel Fire, I read off those items before, but, uh, building security, gas meters, attack hose, supply hose, saws, hose washer, and water main are, are all being transferred to operating budget under capital non-recurring. So those are already accounted for in the budget we just, we just passed.
Did, can I ask about the water main replacement? Did, did we get a price on that?
The original price I got was, uh, twenty-eight thousand, um, and that was just to do the water main on the exterior.
Outside, and then there was something inside.
Benny and I were walking through the firehouse, and he noticed that there were some different types of piping downstairs, uh, that would need to be replaced at the same time with the main, I guess it's, you know, one type of pipe coming in to another.
Yeah.
And he said it could cause an issue, and he highly recommended that be all replaced at once, I didn't have an exact number, so that's where I came up with the thirty-five.
Okay. All right, Matt, maybe, and we can refer that to POC, maybe we can help him out with that a little bit in POC.
Yep. Okay, so the next item, um, you go, your next department is Parks and Recreation. There's only one item on here, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I wanna talk to you guys about the second item, but the first one is, uh, needs assessment master plan for sixty thousand. Uh, we put this on the, on the, uh, list last year, it didn't, did not survive. This is something that is strongly supported by the Park and Rec Commission, and what it is basically, it's a, it's a future planning study. Does not mean that we're gonna run out and spend millions of dollars on new parks, what it does, it gives us, gives our park system a roadmap for development in the future. So like a ten to twenty-year plan, it's, think of it, it's, it's very similar to the plan of conservation and development, and in fact, uh, it would probably be done by the same firm that does our, that helps us with the POCV, and it would be done in conjunction with the Land Use Department. So what this does is, uh, it would run some focus groups, similar to the Bethel Forward Study, uh, it would inventory the parks that we have, it would listen to, uh, in- input from the residents, look at places where, uh, we have land that could be developed, like small parts of Franck, Franck property, um, that could be, you know, could be used for, for active recreation, not just passive. But, uh, I feel very strongly that this is something we need to do for the future, so we have a roadmap. Because we do, we do have, it's like Eileen was telling me, that over this past weekend, when the weather was nice on Saturday, McCowr was parked all the way up to the top of the lot, uh, and then some people were even parking on the, on the grass and, and walking down there, so our, we have a, a growing need for recreational facilities and opportunities for our residents, and I think this is something we need to do to plan for that growth. So I'll make a motion that we include the sixty thousand for the study.
Second for discussion.
Okay.
It's, it's just, can we tie it in with the plan of development?
Yes.
Definitely, so, you know, there should be, hopefully, there should be some savings there, because they're, otherwise, they're duplicating a lot of stuff.
That's, uh, Eileen has been working with Beth on this for about six months to, to coordinate those two things.
Is this just an estimate, no?
Yeah.
The number, this number?
Yeah, yeah. Can we reduce that?
I'm sorry?
Can we reduce that?
We can do, I think we want.
I'd like to reduce it by one half, thirty thousand.
All right. So is that a, you wanna reduce it to thirty thousand?
Yes.
All right, so you wanna make that a motion?
I'll make that motion, reduce that to thirty thousand.
Okay, so we have an amendment on the floor to reduce it to thirty thousand, is there a second for the amendment?
Second.
Okay. Okay, any further discussion on the, uh, on the amendment? Okay, so those in favor of reducing it to thirty thousand?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, well, we'll, I think we can proceed, we'll get a good product out of that. That is it that I had on my list, but I would like to point out something to you, about halfway down on the Park and Rec sheet, I had recommended moving across to, to next year, the one point four million for the locker room and, um, building renovations down there. And I had a very strong appeal from the Park and Rec Commission on that just today, that they feel that they're missing opportunities for residents, that, um, you know, that the building could be utilized much more effectively if we went ahead and got that done. And it would never be, uh, it's never gonna be cheaper, it's, uh, one of the things that could've been done twenty years ago, but, you know, the cost goes up, so, uh, I'm not gonna put a motion on the floor just yet, I wanted to hear your thoughts on that.
Go ahead.
I, I, I personally think it's a lot of money for what they're doing, I don't know if they need to possibly look at other alternatives in that area.
Okay.
Um, but, you know, almost one and a half million dollars for, uh, five thousand square feet of, of renovated space seems like a lot of money.
Well, you know what we could do, uh, seeing as how we've approved some money for the study, we could, we could include that, essentially part of Parks and Recreation, we could, that, that would actually be inventoried and, and get some recommendations, and possibly, uh, at some point in the future, include that in a, a park improvement, uh, initiative, the way Brookfield did a few years ago.
Uh, and I, I agree with Rich on this one, but, you know, this prevailing wage thing is killing us.
Yep, and that's, that's exactly the problem.
Yeah. Well, because they had a bit of roughly eight hundred, it was under eight hundred thousand dollars, but when they found out they had to be prevailing wage, it goes up to one point four.
What's the breaking point for a prevailing wage? What do you have to?
Four, twenty, four fifty or something?
I think they just moved it to half a million.
Yeah.
No, 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 I, I take that back, for renovations, it's still a hundred thousand, right?
Still a hundred thousand.
It's still a hundred thousand for renovation.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They increase new.
To, to what, half a million?
Million.
A million.
A million.
Yeah.
Really?
Uh, for new builds, now for, for renovation, it's still a hundred thousand.
Yeah.
Hmm.
No, I think we have to look at it in a different way.
Okay. All right, well, that, that, that concludes the capital then.
Bottom line, two million, one hundred and two thousand, five hundred. So two million, one oh two, five hundred.
Okay. All right, so I'll make a motion that the total capital budget be funded, do I even need to do that?
Probably can't hurt, because it shows up that way.
All right.
That's how it is actually, uh, referendum-wise, if you would show up with a two million.
Yeah, all right, so I'll make a motion that the capital budget be funded in, in total, as, as, uh, each item has been presented in the amount of two million, one hundred, two thousand, five hundred dollars.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Right. Motion to adjourn. Second?
Yeah.
Those in favor?